Call to order this school committee meeting, January 4th, 2024. Bill, would your team lead us in the pledge allegiance?
Absolutely. I'm John. I want to meet us at the school stadium. I'm ready.
All the time.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Fisher?
Here.
Mr. Hammond?
Here.
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah.
Mr. Serena?
Here.
So first, we have to report to the school committee chair. Really nothing, a report coming off the holidays. I hope everyone had great holidays, great Christmas, and then a good New Year, and loved seeing you guys here tonight. I think we have a great night planned, just like Night at the Wang. So with that, I'll turn it over to the reporter superintendent.
Yeah, and I'll be real brief and then lead into this. So I just want to wish everybody a happy New Year, and hopefully we'll come together as a group and work collaboratively to make everything happen for the budget and everything that's coming up. The couple of things that are on, that are hot topics or coming up is the school calendar's coming up. I'm going to be working on that for you. So at some point in the near future, on a near, on one of the next few meetings, we'll talk about school calendar. I'll give you two or three options on when we start, when we end, what days are off, and you guys, as a school committee, vote on the school calendar. So that'll be something we do in the near future. And the other thing that's everybody's curious about is the snow event that's happening over the weekend. We are trying to keep track of what's going on, so it'll be, you know, minute by minute, day by day. So as soon as I know, I'll let people know. My hope is to have school, but I, safety first. So it's one of those things. My goal is to let people know the night before, if possible, of whether we have school or not. So I just wanted to throw that out there while I'm on and talking to everybody.
A lot of parents here, we have school in the snow, uphill both ways.
Absolutely, absolutely. So now I want to just introduce the Belmonte Steam Academy Robotics Team. So if their coaches would like to come up and introduce them and get this presentation going.
Sir, microphone?
Hi, I'm Bill Palmarene, and I'm the robotics coach with Ms. Williamson. We are here tonight to give you a presentation. As I've told you in the past, the last couple of meetings, they did phenomenally. The biggest excitement to me and Mrs. Williamson was yesterday. We had a practice, we haven't been together in a month, and we did a practice, and the excitement and the camaraderie of this group is just, it's infectious. And they were loud, and we didn't, Ms. Williamson and I usually will tolerate it to a certain degree, but we just said, you know what, they're so excited, they were having such a great time working with each other again, that we didn't stop them. And they, they just, they did phenomenally. This program, we hope that you see the value of this program, because it needs to continue. And they're looking forward to moving on to the middle school. So I'm hoping that somehow there's a program for them at the middle school level and then beyond, because that was the original intent of doing this seven years ago when I started doing it, was that it was supposed to just keep going and getting bigger and better. So my hope is that this continues like this for next year, so that they have something to look forward to. And I know it's budget time, so that's why I have to say that plug. Do you want to say something?
That was good.
Thank you. So now, without further ado, we present the Belmonte Elementary Robotics Team, and here they are. Let's go to the discussion.
Our two teams, the Belmonte Bulbots and the Techno Titans, participated in the first Lego League Robotics Competition at Melrose Middle School on Saturday, December 2nd. Our preparation actually began in the summer, when we received the playing field you see here today with 15 missions. Every year, the competition has a theme, and the title of this year's league competition was Masterpiece. One of the first steps in getting ready was to assemble each of the mission challenges and anchor them to the playing field. We also watched engineering videos of other Lego Spike Prime robots completing missions and combined the best of those designs into our robots.
Starting in October, we met two or more times a week for an hour and a half after school. Once we had robots, we were confident, and we began designing various attachments to accomplish the missions. Some missions require the robot to lift levers, press down on levers, and push or pull objects in the playing field. This is the point where we also began coding or programming using Spike Prime. The more programs we coded, the faster and more accurate we became. To prepare for the competition, we combined the best of our programs to include multiple missions that could be completed in the 2 minutes and 30 seconds we are given per match. Each year, part of the robotics competition includes an innovation project. The signed topic for this year's project connected the theme of arts, hobbies, and As a team, as a team, our greatest interests outside robotics are various sports. The mission was to find ways to share what we love to do so that we could encourage others to participate. To do this, we used presentation boards with an interactive component, as well as live action videos to share the best part of each of these sports. The Techno Titans project centered on football and basketball, while the Bulbots project focused on basketball and soccer. During the competition, the teams presented their projects to a panel of judges without our coaches in the room. We were judged not only the project themselves, but also the teamwork and professionalism. Our projects are on display in the glass case across from the main office.
The robots are getting in place. During competition, they had about a minute to prepare before the timer began, and in 2 minutes and 30 seconds, as they stated, in 2 minutes and 30 seconds, they have to complete all, as many missions as possible. So you're about to witness what competition was like for them. Accuracy is key to success on this, and programming takes a lot of man-hours. And they have to precisely program it to go around each of the mission models so that they don't...
You're in charge, man. Do what you want. You guys have a name for that robot?
Roro. His name is Roro.
Her name is Herb.
I didn't say him.
So you'll notice that they, in that 2 minutes and 30 seconds, they are changing attachments as well to complete certain missions. The attachments, they design themselves, and that is a monumental task, because each of these missions requires different types of movements, such as a push, or a pull, or a lift. If they touch the robot while it's on the field, points are taken away. If they have to go in and move the robot, it's, again, points are taken away. So it's very...
Nice.
Nice, nice job.
Man, doesn't sound like good leader.
Nice job.
You guys know what that looked like right there? You know what that looked like? It looked like Mr. Serena leaving a cape on there. Idea.
I know it.
Oh!
Nice.
There you go.
So is that, so is that area, that half-moon area, that's off the...
This is the starting base.
That's the base?
You can move in here.
Okay.
Great job, Titans.
There's a window. There's something open.
It's probably to keep open that door.
Yeah.
I think my grandmother was ahead of her time, because she said the wheelchair and knocked her into the floor.
She was a pioneer in her field.
Nice.
Nice.
Whoa.
I can send back over, Jida.
Yeah, I'll do it.
Good job, Eric.
Yeah, you got different ones. You had ones that couldn't do anything.
She's not here, is she? She's looking for the window opener.
Got this one.
Now during the actual competition, there's music playing, it's lots of excitement, and it's... Wow. Ms. Williamson and I both just said how wonderful they just did, because we remember our first time here, a couple of years ago, we had some unsuccessful missions, and we, and you were very gracious to allow us to keep going and going and going. So this, this is much, much smoother tonight than our last visit.
Great job, guys.
Great job. So Bill, they do all the coding, right? They do, wow. They use, it's amazing how they're, the programming this year is much better than we've had in the past. The Spike Prime, which is their newest model, which they're using, is much more advanced. We used EV3s in the past, and they were, the coding and the programming were not very accurate. You'd, they'd always be off. These are much more precise. So the, the missions are, the codes work, which gives them a feeling of success. That's awesome. That was awesome. I mean, just watching, it was great.
It's a little, little known fact, Mr. Palmarene, my grandmother was a pioneer in the robotics field. She used to drive a wheelchair through my house and just knock everything down. Who knew she was ahead of her game, you know? No programming necessary.
But this would be great, this would be great to continue with the middle school, like you were saying.
Absolutely.
And these, I would guarantee you that every one of them would be applying to... I guess, I guess we should talk about what you need to do that, what needs to be done to do that. Yeah. Yes.
Would you be willing to work for free?
He's trying to say yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Good job. Cheers, Ian. Want to sit down for a minute?
Go ahead.
Let's just walk by.
All the missions in there.
We'll go off TV.
Ben, he wants to hit the gavel.
Can I hit the gavel?
Good job out there.
Thank you.
Great job. Hey, hold on, I'm gonna finish with those, right?
Sheldon doesn't know what to do, then.
Good job.
Nice job.
Nice job, guys.
My old one's at my house. That was good, you guys moved the table a little. What do you want to do? Why don't you go up there and present? What happened to the boy? Just whatever you want to talk about. Put it around the agenda right now.
Yeah, go ahead.
All the ladies in life?
What?
There's still all the right here.
We are. So you guys want to go sit down?
Yeah, you can go sit down. We're gonna be back to the meeting.
Unless you want to sit over there.
Go ahead. Sit down, Ian. Was the closet all a little bit, I don't know. This is more like it. Such people. Come on, I just. Come on, I just.
I thought John wasn't in the feed. So moving on to old business, we just have a special education update. I just, we thought we'd want to do this and kind of fill in people what's really going on, because you hear a lot of things out there, and I think that Mrs. Trainer will kind of fill you in on some things that's, that's happening, just not in our district, but other districts as well.
Thank you. Thanks. So I'm Dawn Trainer, Executive Director of Pupil Personnel Services, and thanks for having me here. I knew we'd do a special education update, so what I kind of figured what I would do is give you some things that SARGUS is doing really well in, both compared to the state and what's happening here really well, and things that we're working on, things that we acknowledge we need some help in and we need some work on. I do want to say congratulations to Mr. Wittridge and Ms. Mastercola on your appointment to the board. Nice to see you up there. Welcome. Okay, so first of all, we, I came to you probably a year and a half ago when we were just coming out of the throngs of COVID, and, you know, I was talking about a lot of things that we wanted to do, and I think some of the things I'll touch upon today. The first thing was a special education eligibility rate, eligibility rate in the state. The state now is hovering at 19%, where it used to be somewhere around 16%. Not a big surprise, because coming out of COVID, we're seeing a lot more students with a lot of need now. They're at 19%, and we are still right around 17 and a half percent. So we're still below the state rate of eligibility, which is still good. But right now, what I'm watching is an uptick in eligibility rate at the Veterans Elementary. For some reason, right now, it's, that's the hotspot. We're seeing at K and 1, a lot of eligibility students coming in with referrals. These are legitimate, and they're students that are qualifying. So I'm keeping a strict eye on that right now. I do, I do anticipate that our rate will tick up, and I'll touch a little bit upon staffing when I get into that as well, that has affected the VELC. We're also working on preparing for the implementation of DESI's new IEP. Some districts, very few implemented this year. Most will implement the 24-25 school year, and we have, the DESI has five principles that they're centering around this new IEP. It's much more consolidated, where there were many forms that went along with the IEP, now the IEP has most of the information in it. So it looks very long, however, all of the pertinent information that belongs in an IEP is in there. It is very, very student-focused. It actually names that they want kids as early as three, three years old, to start participating in what they want to be doing with their education. Sounds a little funny, maybe, but they want student voice and choice. So I think it's a very good focus for parents, as well as students, to become drivers of what's happening in their child's education. So we have a lot of work going on with that. To that point, I've held 15 staff PDs around the new IEP over the course of the last school year and this school year. Again, we're not launching this IEP until September of 2024, okay? But all of last year and all of this year, we are holding staff PD. This is for any staff that wants to join, general education staff as well as special education staff. So in speaking to my colleagues from other districts, I know that we are well ahead of the curve in preparedness, and I'm really proud of that fact for our staff. I've also set up Aspen trainings. We use X2 Aspen System Management for our student information system. Through them, I'm arranging trainings as well, so that key staff have their information that they can use to access the IEP, and then staff, you know, typical users like service providers, teachers, will have mass trainings for them as well. I'm going to be looking into parent trainings and community information centers with local districts. We're working on that now, my partners and I from, I don't know if I've mentioned to you before, but I belong to a seam directors group, and that's with a lot of local districts, and we kind of collaborate together, and we want to start a parent information group on this new IEP. A really good thing that I'm gonna, I'm gonna kind of toot our horn for is I work with Shore Collaborative and the director over at Shore Collaborative, and we're starting an alternative education path, and this program is going to be housed at the middle and high school. And it's an alternative path for students who, you know, don't really want a typical school day, but they need an education. And everybody deserves an education, and sometimes that typical day just doesn't fit for everybody. This is going to be a really important pathway for students, because it's going to help them to reach their goals and reach their potential, but it's also going to help us to meet their needs and not, basically, send them out of district, because that's the path that we would be looking at if we didn't form this program, okay? So this path, this pathway, we don't have a name for it yet, but I am working with the director over at Shore Collaborative. We have vetted this with DESI to make sure that it is legit, so we're good, and we plan to launch that in late January, early February. Another thing I'm really proud of is something that the educators provided to you, I think it was in October, it was the MCAS scores. We don't generally talk about students with disabilities and MCAS scores, because we know that it is a very difficult exam for them to take. That comprehensive exam is nothing that we really tout for students with disabilities. But one thing that I do want to point out, and there's, there's a lot to this, those grade 10 scores in math, okay? When we talk about the students reaching proficiencies, students with disabilities, okay, SARGUS was only behind Melrose, only behind Melrose. Melrose had 29% proficient, SARGUS had 28. The next closest one was Wakefield at 14, and everybody else behind us was in single digits. That's amazing. That is amazing.
Great job.
It is, it's a great job, and I'm going to tell you how that happened. It starts with the planning and the leadership level, high-quality instructional materials that we work together to get. We make sure that the IEP meetings are happening, that the parents are communicated with to say, hey, your kid is typically in a small group, we're going to have your kid push in to great educators, like somebody sitting right here in the front row, working with general educators, and getting that content-rich instruction. This is the move that we've been working to make, and it's those small gains that I'm really proud of for all of the work that's been happening. It starts at the top and it keeps working down, and when you see that working, those are the results you get. It's little steps, but it does work, and that's when you see it work, and I'm really, really, really proud of that, and I just wanted to really point that out. The other thing is, is out-of-district tuition right now, we're in great shape. I couldn't tell you that a few years ago. Ms. Andrews and I have done a lot of work together. We are in great fiscal shape. We're under the state rate of how, the percentages of students out of district, theirs at 2%. We're under that right now. And my clerks, the ETLs, myself, we go after cost shares with the Department of Ed if we have to. We do whatever we have to to make sure that we're keeping that where we need it, okay? And that's not just about a fiscal thing. It's about kids who need it, get it, and when we have to send a child out, we make sure that we are fiscally responsible about that. We have both responsibilities there, okay? And now to the things that we are working on, staffing, all right? At the start of this school year, the U.S. Department of Education reported that 42 states had shortages in special education staff, 42 states. So SARGUS is no different. What I've noticed, the trend here, is that coming straight out of COVID, it was special education staff, it was BCBA staff, it was paraprofessionals. Now, it's speech and language. That is the hot commodity. No one can find them. What are we doing? We're being transparent with parents, and it's, it's causing a little bit of an uproar. You may have heard some complaints, and I want to let you know what's happening, okay? I worked with the Department of Ed over the summer to develop an interrupted services letter. I knew, I saw the writing on the wall. I knew that we were not going to get providers. I could tell that my colleagues weren't getting them, so who the heck's going to get them, right? What are we going to do? I don't want to run into a situation where parents are going to... if we didn't form this program, okay? So this path, this pathway, we don't have a name for it yet, but I am working with the director over at Shore Collaborative. We have vetted this with DESI to make sure that it is legit. So we're good and we plan to launch that in late January, early February. Another thing I'm really proud of is something that the educators provided to you, I think it was in October. It was the MCAS scores. We don't generally talk about students with disabilities and MCAS scores because we know that it is a very difficult exam for them to take. That comprehensive exam is nothing that we really tout for students with disabilities. But one thing that I do want to point out and there's, there's a lot to this. Those grade 10 scores in math, okay? When we talk about the students reaching proficiencies, students with disabilities, okay? SARGUS was only behind Melrose, only behind Melrose. Melrose had 29% proficient, SARGUS had 28. The next closest one was Wakefield at 14 and everybody else behind us was in single digits. That's amazing. That is amazing.
Great job.
It is, it's a great job. And I'm going to tell you how that happened. It starts with the planning and the leadership level, high quality instructional materials that we work together to get. We make sure that the IEP meetings are happening, that the parents are communicated with to say, hey, your kid is typically in a small group. We're going to have your kid push in to great educators like somebody sitting right here in the front row, working with general educators and getting that content-rich instruction. This is the move that we've been working to make. And it's those small gains that I'm really proud of for all of the work that's been happening. It starts at the top and it keeps working down. And when you see that working, those are the results you get. It's little steps, but it does work. And that's when you see it work. And I'm really, really, really proud of that. And I just wanted to really point that out. The other thing is, is out of district tuition right now, we're in great shape. I couldn't tell you that a few years ago. Ms. Andrews and I have done a lot of work together. We are in great fiscal shape. We're under the state rate of how the percentages of students out of district, theirs at 2%. We're under that right now. And my clerks, the ETLs, myself, we go after cost shares with the Department of Ed if we have to. We do whatever we have to to make sure that we're keeping that where we need it, okay? And that's not just about a fiscal thing. It's about kids who need it, get it. And when we have to send a child out, we make sure that we are fiscally responsible about that. We have both responsibilities there, okay? And now to the things that we are working on, staffing. All right. At the start of this school year, the U.S. Department of Education reported that 42 states had shortages in special education staff. Forty-two states. So SARGUS is no different. What I've noticed, the trend here, is that coming straight out of COVID, it was special education staff, it was BCBA staff, it was paraprofessionals. Now it's speech and language. That is the hot commodity. No one can find them. What are we doing? We're being transparent with parents and it's, it's causing a little bit of an uproar. You may have heard some complaints and I want to let you know what's happening, okay? I worked with the Department of Ed over the summer to develop an interrupted services letter. I knew, I saw the writing on the wall. I knew that we were not going to get providers. I could tell that my colleagues weren't getting them, so who the heck's going to get them, right? What are we going to do? I don't want to run into a situation where parents are going to the Department of Ed, trying to find answers from them, making complaints against the district to no avail because the Department of Ed can't step in and have a speech and language provider for them, right? It's just going to cause parents more frustration and kids are not getting what they need. And that's not a good mix. So what we, what I did was I developed this letter. I used a little bit of case law in the letter and I also used Commonwealth of Massachusetts regulations in the letter. I vetted it through DESI, I vetted it through legal. I have a copy of it for you and I'm going to show it to you. And the letter can be a little alarming to the parents sometimes, but what I've instructed the ETLs to do, they're the team leaders, the team chairs, they have conversations with these parents. And it details in the letter exactly how the lack of service affects the child, okay? Because every child's IEP is different. So their services are all different. I can't, you know, I as a director can't tell 500 families, you know, your kid's missing this, your kid's missing this. And then what does that mean to that child's day? So the letter is personalized and it goes out to the family. So the transparency was number one. And then we're doing that. To get staff, we post on search, we search engines, but that hasn't really been working. We do repost, you guys may see those, I'm not sure. I've been working with outside providers to try to get service providers and so far, knock on wood, I think I have two coming in. I finally have found two people. Yes. So I do think that families are going to see some relief in the second half of the year, thankfully. I'm praying. Keep your fingers crossed. And moving into, and planning for the next, next year's fiscal budget, we'll talk more about the requests that we're going to make, but more attention will be focused on student services. And that's a big bucket. But we know that teachers and support staff on the ground, doing this hard work every day, need more help for the students that are presented to them, okay? We're not teaching the same students anymore. We all know it. We need to say that out loud and be okay with it, but know that we need help. And we're here to make sure that we work over time to build back up what we need in order to make sure kids are getting what they need and teachers are not trying to, not really pulling their hair out trying to make, you know, make those, make those needs, meet those needs. And there's one statistic I do want to share with you and I'm going to show you this, this graph too that I have for you as school committee members. Department of Ed has something that they call radar and I follow that very closely. I look at it a lot. There's a lot of data on there for special education. You'll see SARGUS versus many districts versus the state. And right now, we're good with paraprofessionals. For every 100 students with disabilities, we have the state level of paraprofessionals, which is around 10 and 1/2. We're good. For teachers, special education teachers, we're abysmally low, okay? For every 100 students with disabilities, we have almost one teacher where the state has an average of five. All right? We know this, we've, we have been talking about this and it's going to be a slow build back, but it's a conscious build back. And when we talk about our budget and we talk about what we want to do with our budget, you'll see where the priority is, okay? I do want to say that I think things are going very well despite some of the things that I've brought to light here that we are working on. Speech and language providers, that's the only thing right now that we're missing. I feel lucky. I see other districts that are struggling to provide special educators, BCBA's, you name it. We're not there right now. Doesn't mean we won't be, but we're not there right now. So I do want to count our blessings. I do think that our teachers, our providers, everybody that we have as a team works very, very hard here. And I think we provide a very good product for our families and kids. I just think we can do it better too and I think we're making a conscious effort to get there.
Excellent. Well, thank you. I, I, I just really have one question. So just to fill these special ed positions that are extremely hard to fill, obviously, is there anything that DESI's doing to help or anyone like? Is, can we reach out to the, to the special ed schools, the Salem States and?
Yep.
You know, I, I, I don't know the answer certainly, but I know the other districts are struggling just like us. So I don't know if there's an answer.
They are. They are. And, and the thing about it is too, what, what's coming to light as well is, I, I don't know if you've heard about this, but you know, the Department of Ed put out emergency licenses and, and that did help, but what's helped, what's happening is the emergency license is giving us unprepared educators too. So the unpreparedness is, is impacting what's happening with educators leaving the profession as well. So where, you know, as a group and as, as leaders, we talk about this and there is talk from the highest levels at the state about how to attack that as well, how to better prepare educators so that they can meet the needs of students in front of them. I don't think there's any hard answers yet, but it is, it is a conscious conversation, yeah. Yeah.
I don't know if anyone else?
I'm good.
Thank you. I appreciate the time.
Okay.
Appreciate the update and thank you guys for doing what you do. I get, I can only imagine what it's like, you know?
It's a great place to be.
Yeah.
We're doing well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So moving on to new business, we have approval of bills in the amount of $479,377.77.
Motion to approve.
Chair seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Approval of school committee minutes for 11:30, 23.
Motion to approve.
Chair seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Third is approval of school committee minutes 12, 21, 23.
Motion to approve.
Chair seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Next.
Abstained, yeah.
So moving on to public comment. I don't know if we have any public comment. Nothing?
No.
No?
No. Species.
Chair, do you have any comment? Conscious observer. You know, before we adjourned, Mr. Wittridge said at the, at the end of the meetings, we should have a few, few minutes for the school committee members to, you know, point out things they want to point out and things like that. And I think that's a great idea. So if anyone has anything they'd like to point out, anything going on or?
Wow, you know, I feel like I haven't caught up in a while. There's so much that went on over the last couple of months. I do want to say that we were in Melrose for the robotics competition and it was absolutely incredible. It's a great atmosphere. I know, I was talking to Mr. Pomerini a little bit about it. Talked maybe about maybe trying to bring something like that here, you know, maybe at the high school or, I don't know, somewhere here, you know? It'd be really a great event. It was, remember he said it was like gladiators and was nuts? But gladiators, but like civilized, you know? It was really a good time. Nice, eh? So I would love to see us have something like that here, you know? But I guess the first step is working on a program for the, the middle school. Yeah. And also I want to, I know there's a lot of sports that we, we point out, but we, you know, we pass up the wrestling a lot. And I just want to point out that those guys wrestled quite a few tournaments over the Christmas break. And being led by the two LaRusso brothers, the kids are, they're the captains of the team. They're unbelievable. So I just wanted to give them a big shout out for the whole SARGUS Peabody wrestling team. And the same with the hockey team. They're, we all know how we feel about our sports being in Peabody, our rival, and now we're together. It's sick that they even talk about, but we do it. But I feel like those kids get left behind because of it. I feel like they get, you know, they, they get kind of swept away because, you know, they're not here. We don't see them at Kazabowski. You know, we got to go to Peabody to see our kids play. So, but I would just want to say that those kids are doing a great job and we really, we appreciate them sticking with hockey. It's, it's tough. It really is. Yeah, I guess I'll probably shut up before I get in trouble on that. But other than that, I just want to say, well, you know, it's, it's good to see, special ed especially, it's near and dear to my heart with my daughter and stuff. And like I said, being shorthanded, it's, it's crazy what, what these, I don't want to say these people, but the educators do. They're unbelievable. They really are. And it's, I honestly, I could not, I couldn't do it all day long. You know what I mean? It's a lot, you know, it's a lot. And they're unbelievable and they, they do it with a smile. And so, yeah, we really got to do something about that. But other than that, I just want to say Happy New Year to my fellow board members.
Happy New Year. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
That's it for me.
I'm quiet tonight.
Yeah, I didn't write anything down. It was a problem.
Yeah, I just wanted to wish everyone a Happy New Year. Looking forward to, I think with our next meeting, we're going to kick into gear on the, on the budget. I think everything we talked about tonight involved the budget in one way or another. So it's obviously very important and you and Ms. Andrews and everyone have been working on this for a lot longer than that. So thank you for everything you've been doing on that. So looking forward to getting started.
Nice.
Excellent. Well, with that said, do I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Chair seconds, all in favor?
Aye.